I'd like to call this March 5th meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowers, would you call the roll?
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Pearson?
Here.
Ms. Phillips?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Mugler?
Here. Let the record show that all of the school board members are in attendance at tonight's meeting along with Division Superintendent Dr. Linda Schifflit, our school board clerk, Ms. Carolyn Bowers, and our school board attorney, Ms. Nancy Reeves. Our student liaison, Ms. Ray Bolton, is on her way but is running a little bit late this evening. Normally she does these introductions, but I'll be taking care of that tonight. We have with us Anaya Atkins, and she is a 5th grade student from Bassett Elementary School. She's going to give our invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Anaya?
Yes.
I can hardly see you over the big instrument here on the stage. Are you going to start with the pledge or your invocation?
Invocation.
Okay, very good.
Good evening. My name is Anaya Atkins. I'm a 5th grade student at Bassett Elementary, home of the pandas. In recognition of Read Across America Month and Dr. Seuss's birthday, I would like to read a short quote from Dr. Seuss's "All The Places You'll Go." Congratulations, today is your day. You're off to great places, you're off and away. You won't lag behind because you'll have the speed, you'll pass the whole gang, and you'll soon take the lead. Wherever you fly, you'll be best of best. Wherever you go, you will top all the rest. And will you succeed? Yes, you will indeed. Ninety-eight and three-quarters percent guaranteed. Kate, you will move mountains. You're off to great places, today's your day. Your mountain is waiting, so get on your way, on the places you'll go. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Very nice. Thank you for presenting tonight. Dr. Seuss is one of my personal favorites. I like the selection you chose tonight. Do you have some family with you tonight?
Yes.
Would you like to make some introductions?
Yes.
Great.
These are my grandparents, Lawrence and Tammy Carnegie. This is my stepdad Dante, and my mom Sherrell. This is Ms. Seal, my teacher Ms. Ready, my principal and assistant principal Mr. Johnson and Ms. Francis.
Very nice. Would you all stand up and be recognized? You have quite a group, an entourage you brought with you tonight. Thank you all so much for being with us. Anaya, is that how you say your first name?
Yes.
Just want to make sure. What's your favorite subject in school?
Math.
Math, awesome, okay. That's a great skill to have. And how do you like things there at Bassett?
It's fun, and I like cooperating with kids and my classmates.
Okay, great. And you're a 5th grader, correct?
Yes.
And so you'll be going to middle school next year. Do you know where you're going?
Um, Lindsay.
Lindsay, okay, terrific. Well, we look forward to hearing good things about you at Lindsay as well, all right? Well, thank you so much for coming tonight.
You're welcome.
We have another treat tonight from one of our Hampton City Schools students. Morgan Sutherland of Kickatan High School is going to perform on the marimba tonight. Fantastic. Morgan, we're not going to let you slip away quite yet. We've got a couple of questions for you. How long have you been playing that instrument?
Since 6th grade.
6th grade. And what year are you?
I'm a junior.
You're a junior, okay. Looking at colleges? What's your top one on your list?
University of Texas.
Oh, my goodness, you're not going to stay close. Okay, well, thank you so much for being here tonight. That was fantastic. See, we have a much better gig than city council because they don't, they don't get any of this great stuff that we do, so they've got nothing on us. We move on to the portion in our meeting where we have recognitions, and I'll call on our Executive Director of Marketing and Public Relations, Ms. Diana Galata. I'm going to turn that over to her, and she's going to be joined this evening by school board member, Mr. Joe Kilgore, Vice Chair. Mr. Kilgore.
Good evening. It's always so hard to follow these great kids. I think I want to be moved on the agenda. It's my privilege to recognize this month's Dove Award winner, and the Dove Award basically stands for dedication of valuable employees, and it's given to an employee who regularly provides exceptional customer service to our students, staff, and patrons. The Dove Award this month goes to Teresa L. Brown from Sims Middle School. And we're going to have you come up here in just a minute. She was nominated by Felicia Johnson, who I do not believe is here, okay? But I thought, I don't like to read to you, but her form, her nomination form was really touching, so I'm going to read the actual nomination from Felicia Johnson, which says, "It's taken me a while to even begin to deal with the death of my father. That is why it's taken me so long to do this. Ms. Brown was not only my colleague when I was with HCS, but she was my son's 6th grade language arts teacher. When I scanned across the room at my father's wake, there she was sitting. I didn't know that she knew. She made her way to my son and embraced him, and then handed him a card. That meant so much to the both of us. It brought me to tears, knowing that she came there to support not only me, but most importantly, my son. She was always good to him and taught him more in one year than many teachers combined. He wanted to make her proud and worked hard to do so. Mrs. Brown is awesome. I thank her for being not only a stellar teacher, but a supreme human being." If you would please come forward.
It is my honor to present you with a Dove Award from Hampton City Schools. The certificate reads, "Presented to Teresa L. Brown, Sims Middle School, presented by the Hampton School Board for Outstanding Customer Service in Hampton City Schools," and it is a dedication of our valuable employee certificate. Truly are an example of dedicated and caring employees, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Would you like to say something?
I just would like to recognize my principal, who is my biggest cheerleader, Sharon Slater, our bookkeeper, Ms. Lee. I have former assistant principal, Mrs., oh my gosh, my mind. What's your name, girl? Thank you, Ms. Sutton. Two of my, well, I'm old, so two of my former principals, I love them both, Mrs. Woods and Mr. Cagiano. My daughter is here, and my colleagues are here from Sims also. I work at a wonderful school. Thank you very much.
Ms. Brown. Ms. Brown, good girl.
Ms. Brown.
Ms. Brown. Just one more quick thing. Ms. Brown has also been seen doing other good things with the Sims basketball teams over the years, boys and girls, I believe. She's a tireless volunteer, and these are things that you find about people just by paying attention. Thank you again, Ms. Brown.
Congratulations again. Now Kayla Young of Bethel High School is up next, and we'll have you come up in just a minute, because you have quite the bio, so it might take me just a minute to talk about how great you are. She has been named a finalist in the National Achievement Scholarship Program. This program is an academic competition that was established in 1964 to provide recognition for outstanding black American high school students. Students enter by taking the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test and meeting other qualifications. Students are selected as finalists based on meeting high academic standards as the highest scoring participants in the program. Approximately 1,300 students make it to the finalist stage out of a pool of more than 160,000 students. So pretty big time to make it as a finalist. Students who enter the National Achievement Scholarship Program may also enter the National Merit Scholarship Program where they can receive scholarships in the amount of $2,500 and are also eligible for corporate-sponsored achievement scholarship awards. So let me tell you a little bit about Kayla. She's a co-saluditorian of Bethel High School. She's captain of the Bethel Room Swim Team and swims with the SVEA Seahawk Senior Premier Group. She currently serves as committee chair of the Hampton Youth Planning Commission and volunteers as an assistant Sunday School teacher. Kayla, I don't know when you have the time to study. Kayla has participated in five different sports while attending Bethel: swimming, cross-country, field hockey, indoor and outdoor track and field. And she's also a first-degree black belt. She has been accepted to Vanderbilt University with a full academic scholarship, but she hopes to attend MIT in the fall, where she will study biology with a minor in psychology. Her goal is to become a medical doctor, and I feel pretty certain you're going to reach your goals. Would you please come forward so we can recognize you?
I am glad that Ms. Galata read your bio because there's a lot going on in your life, and she is a shining example of what can make us all proud in Hampton, and it is my honor to present you with this achievement certificate. The Hampton City School Board congratulates Kayla Young, Bethel High School finalist, National Achievement Scholarship Program, signed by our Chairman Martha Mugler and our Superintendent Dr. Linda Schifflit. Would you mind introducing the folks from Bethel that are here and your family as well?
Sure, no problem. I wanted to introduce my mom and dad. Hi, you guys. Thanks for your unwavering support and everything. I really love you. Mr. Anthony Young, my little brother over there, please stand up so we can recognize Thank you for getting on my nerves so often and keeping me on my toes. I love you, little brother. And Mr. Saunders, my principal. Oh, my gosh, he's got to be my number-one fan. I really appreciate you, Mr. Saunders. Thank you.
Hang on just a second, Kayla. Hang on. One other thing. Snail mail. Just wanted to announce to you and to everyone, this is a letter from the National Achievement Scholarship Program. Congratulations, you have been selected as a winner of the National Achievement $2,500 Scholarship.
That is real. That is real. It's your man. Thank you. And congratulations to our honorees tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Galata, Mr. Kilgore, and congratulations again, Kayla Young, and also to our Dove winner tonight, Teresa Brown. We have also tonight with us a Tiger Cub group, PAC 184 from Gloria Day. Are you still in the room?
Yes.
Can we stand up? Thank you all for joining us. They've been here tonight on a tour of our television station for a badge requirement, so we are happy to have you all with us. Good luck to you in your badge work, all of you. We move on tonight to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda consists of items 4.01 through 4.06. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second? It's been moved by Mrs. Phillips and seconded by Mrs. Smith that we approve this evening's consent agenda. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote? Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to superintendent and staff reports, I'll turn things over at this time to Dr. Schifflit.
Thank you, Ms. Mugler. Before I begin our report this evening, is Mr. Raymond Haynes still in the audience?
No, he left.
He left. Well, I did want to announce that we have a new doctor in the house, Dr. Raymond Haynes. So when you see him, please give him congratulations on his wonderful accomplishment.
Say, "What's up, doc?"
Right, that's right. We're certainly proud of him, and we know how very hard he had to work to attain that degree. Our first report this evening, if it's March, it's time for calendar, and so we have our original calendar committee individuals. I think the thing is that once you get on this committee, you never get off. Am I right, Ms. Johnson? And so they'll be doing a presentation on the proposed 2014-15 calendar and 2015-2016 school calendar. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Good evening, Dr. Schifflit, Ms. Mugler, Mr. Kilgore, and board members. My name is Mary Johnson, and I'm a community representative on the Calendar Work Team. I'm joined by Missy Powell-Riedel, a kindergarten teacher at Burbank Elementary, and our purpose here tonight is to share with you the recommendations of the Calendar Work Team. Our charge in developing the 2014-16 calendars were to recommend a two-year calendar that supports continuous improvement of student achievement and professional learning for employees, review feedback on the 2014-16 draft calendars, and to continue to support the regional school agreement. Our work team is a very dedicated group that consists of a diverse group of people comprised of parents, teachers, support personnel, community members, and administrators. This is a list of who is on our team, and I'd like to take this time to ask anybody on our team to stand up and be recognized. We have a few people here. Thank you. And we are led, of course, by the wonderful Dr. Pat Leary, who never lets you get off the committee, by the way. She finds a new title for you no matter what, so. I'll be 90 and still presenting at some point, but that's okay. As we began our task, we understood the importance of developing a calendar that met the state requirements of 140 clock hours per year for high school courses in order for a student to receive credit for the class, the yearly requirement of 990 hours for elementary and middle school students, and having a minimum of 180 school days. As part of the regional calendar initiative on the Peninsula, we followed the common winter and spring break times that were agreed upon by the majority of the Peninsula School Divisions, as well as the Regional Professional Development Day designated at the end of the first semester. We also built in additional days in case school needs to be closed due to severe inclement weather, which we all have realized was very important, and included time for professional learning, unencumbered teacher work time, and parent-teacher conferences. We reviewed feedback on the proposed calendars and looked closely at suggestions that were provided. We're excited that the winter break in 2014-15 school year will be a full two weeks. Yippee. This is possible, though, only because Labor Day is September 1st. School begins on September 2nd, and the winter holiday falls just right to allow us two weeks. We're not always able to do that, even though that is our number-one request by employees and students and parents. Our recommended calendars will continue to support the Hampton City School employees' families on the Peninsula who have children in school divisions other than in Hampton. Our work team met faithfully in January, beginning in January, we reviewed the regional calendar proposal, as well as feedback we received from staff and parents. We used the Connect Ed message system to inform parents and staff that the draft calendar was available and to invite feedback. We were able to reach about 92% of our parents and staff through Connect Ed, over 24,000 of our 26,000 parents and staff members. We received, however, feedback from less than 1% of our stakeholders, but the work team read and carefully considered the feedback we received on the calendars presented. Each year, we receive questions about why we do not honor Veterans Day with a school holiday. While we do not recognize Veterans Day by closing schools for students and staff on Veterans Day, we do honor our veterans in a variety of ways at each of our schools. We take this opportunity to welcome veterans into our schools to have lunch with our students, to attend programs honoring their dedicated service, et cetera. We also use this day to teach our students about the many contributions and sacrifices our veterans have made and continue to make for us through their military service. Each year, school administrators and teachers receive information from Alma Dietz, the social studies curriculum leader, on suggestions for lessons for Veterans Day. We fully embrace all that this special day has to offer. Another comment we received frequently this year was to build in a full two-week winter break for the 15-16 school year. At this time, the recommended calendar reflects the regional calendar agreement to end with an early close day on December 22nd, 2015, and return to school on January 4th, 2016. However, in light of the feedback, we will revisit this next year with the Regional Calendar Work Team and try to determine if this can be adjusted. And Missy will continue.
As is our current practice, this is a two-year calendar, one year to be approved and a one-year draft or planning calendar. We continue to recommend early release days for elementary and middle school students to allow for protected teacher work time, as well as time for professional development for instructional assistants, school security officers, and other 180-day employees. Our recommended calendar also maintains a conference day in an effort to support parent-teacher communication. The hours will be flexible within each building and will accommodate working parents' schedules. This day is on Election Day, when our schools are closed to students, and are used as polling places for voters. Early release days for elementary and middle school students are scheduled at the end of the nine weeks to assist teachers in closing out the nine weeks, planning for the upcoming nine weeks, and professional development for 180-day employees. We also continue to recommend that the end of the first semester include one full day of unencumbered teacher work time. Our recommended calendars maintain the current calendar of 194 teacher days and is comprised of 180 days for students, seven teacher pre-service days, two school learning plan days, teacher work days, and the three-day, the three-day, 18-hour professional development requirement, which is outside of regular teacher contract hours. The recommended calendars also maintain the half-day exam schedule at the end of the first semester for high schools. In summary, the Calendar Work Team recognizes the importance of continued professional growth for our staff in support of student learning. Division-wide professional development will take place on one day during the pre-service week in August. This day will enable teachers, administrators, curriculum leaders, and other support personnel to participate in learning opportunities that will be designed to improve and enhance instructional strategies and positively impact student achievement. The Regional Professional Development Day at the end of the first semester is an agreed-upon date across the region, which will allow teachers and support personnel, such as special educators, teachers of gifted students, New Horizon personnel, and school counselors, to work together. This day will also be assigned as a school or building-level professional development day for teachers who are not identified to participate in the regional professional learning opportunity. The unencumbered teacher work day will provide time for staff to regroup, plan, and prepare for the second semester. Our work team feels these calendar recommendations accommodate the needs of many of our Hampton families who are affected by the neighboring Peninsula District's calendars. There are two inclement weather days and a bank day built into the calendar. We are recommending that the two inclement weather days be removed from the end of the school year if they are not needed. Unfortunately, that's not our case this year. The early close days will include all schools and all employees and will be two hours earlier than the regular dismissal time. These days are generally scheduled before a holiday or break and are adjusted each year based on how the holidays fall during the year. This year, the early close days we recommend are November 26th, February 13th, and May 22nd. As agreed upon by all of the Peninsula School Divisions, spring break will continue to be the first full week in April, which will give us a consistent block of instructional time to review and prepare students for our annual SOL exams. We recommend approval of the 2014-15 school calendar and the 2015-16 planning calendar. As you are aware, the General Assembly has not yet approved a change in the Code of Virginia allowing school divisions to have local control of the school calendar and determine if they want to begin school prior to Labor Day. Therefore, these calendar proposals do not include a pre- Therefore, these calendar proposals do not include a pre-Labor Day start for school. As a work team, we continue to support legislation that will provide for local control of the calendar. The proposals before you will allow Hampton City Schools to meet the learning needs of our students while benefiting from a regional school calendar. At this time, we are prepared to answer any questions you may have of us. And thank you.
Thank you. Questions from board members for our Calendar Work Team? Mrs. Henry?
Just to comment that we were glad you did all that inclement weather planning. I think some other people were not so fortunate. I just wondered, would you define for the public what our region is? Because I think we're on this side, we've got our act together, but the other side doesn't want to play with us, do they?
At this time, they have not ever answered to any of the invitations. But our region includes Gloucester, Pecosin, Williamsburg, James City County, Newport News, and Hampton.
Thank you.
Oh, and York County.
And York County.
Any other questions? I think you did such a thorough job that all the questions were answered. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Shiflett?
Also want to thank you for the work that you've done this year and all the past years. Our next report has to do with some work that we've been doing for our budget for this year. And one way, one thing that we wanted to look at was a way of containing the cost of our health insurance. And so Ms. Robin Ruth will be talking to us tonight about the High Deductible Health Plan, assisted with, by Susie.
Yes. I'm good right here. Good evening. We did want to share with you some information about the High Deductible Health Plan that we will be adding to our benefits options for the 14-15 school year. And there are two components to the plan we'll be talking about tonight. One is the High Deductible Health Plan, which is the insurance itself. And there's a component with a health savings plan that we'll go into in some detail. First, what is a High Deductible Health Plan? And it's very self-explanatory in its title. It is a health plan that has a very high deductible. It was, it's designed to have much lower premiums than other plans that might have smaller deductibles. And they were created as a way to help with rising healthcare costs. And it includes both medical costs and prescription costs. With a High Deductible Health Plan, there are some services that are covered 100% upfront before the employee has to spend any money. And those include preventive care activities. If you go in for, instance, if you have children and you take them in for a well-baby check or a well-child check, that's covered at 100%. If you have preventive screenings, annual mammograms, annual screening checks, screenings for skin cancer, things like that, those are covered at 100%, so long as they're just screenings. If there is some thought that, you know, it's not a screening, it's because they think you actually have something, then there will be some costs. But so long as it's just a generic screening with no symptoms, it's covered at 100%. In terms of eligible medications, there are some that are covered at 100%. Again, these are preventive medicines. For instance, asthma inhalers, some heart disease medicines, and medicines that are associated with stroke prevention are covered at 100%. It also includes prenatal vitamins, smoking cessation, and things like that. In terms of the deductible phase, if you go in to see the doctor for anything that's not considered preventive care, the employee will pay 100% of all of the eligible expenses until they meet the deductible. So that would include going to the doctor when you're sick, lab work, diagnostics if you're presenting some sort of symptoms and they want to test you to see what those are. Also hospitalizations, you would be required to pay 100% of those until you reach the deductible. These are just, we are still in negotiations with Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield to finalize what Hampton City Schools' High Deductible Plan will look like. But right now, we anticipate that the individual deductible will be $2,000 and that the family deductible will be $4,000. With Hampton City Schools' insurance, we have many levels of coverage. We have employee-only, employee-plus-one, or employee-plus-one-child, employee-plus-children. Under a High Deductible Plan, they only identify employee-only and family. And so family is anything more than just the employee. It could be an employee and one child, it could be an employee and a spouse, it could be an employee and 10 children. Anything more than the employee is a family. Once the deductible has been met, we move into what's called a co-insurance phase. And at that point, the insurance will pay 80% of non-preventive medical visits and services if it's in-network. They'll pay 70% if it's out-of-network, which means the employee would pay 20 or 30, depending upon whether it's in or out of network. Again, the out-of-pocket maximums are in draft form, but we do anticipate that the out-of-pocket maximum for an individual for in-network services would be $3,000. And for a family, it would be $6,000. If they're going with out-of-network services, it would be 4,800. These are very high, thus the name, the High Deductible. But when you reach your out-of-pocket maximum, you have really reached your out-of-pocket maximum, because this does include prescriptions. Our, with our current PPO and HMO, there is an out-of-pocket maximum, but that doesn't include prescriptions. So you can, even once you reach your out-of-pocket maximum, sometimes you still continue to have to, to pay out for prescriptions. I think there are a few other things. So for someone looking to control their costs, this is a great option, because you know you're never going to pay more than 3,000 if you're an individual, or 6,000 for family. The other component that I was referring to earlier with the health savings, or the High Deductible Plan, is the Health Savings Account. For those of you who are familiar with flex spending accounts, which we currently have, there are a lot of similarities. It allows the employee to make pre-tax contributions into a bank account that's specifically set up for the employee, and the funds are available on or after each pay date. That's one of the key differences with the flex spending account. If you have a flex spending account, and let's say you put $1,000 into it, on October 1st, which is the first day of our plan year, you can spend all $1,000. You don't have that flexibility with the HSA, but you also don't have the limits to, or the limits are larger for what you can put away each year, and there's no limit to the overall total for your Health Savings Account. You use your HSA dollars to pay for deductibles, for the co-insurance, and you can, the withdrawals that you make for eligible expenses are tax-exempt. Also, the money that's put into your HSA is taken out on a pre-tax basis, so it does help to lower the employee's taxable income. Your HSA balance will carry over at the end of the year. Our current flex spending account does not have that option, so it's a use-it-or-lose-it. You can carry over from year to year anything that's left in your Health Savings Account. And again, the interest earnings are tax-deferred, and you can use them on any sort of medical This slide here takes a look at the contributions. Hampton City Schools is actually going to be making a contribution to all employees who have a High Deductible Plan. Now, these are one-time contributions. This is not a contribution that will be made on a monthly basis. For employees only, it will be a $250 contribution, 500 for employee-plus-one, 750 for employee-plus-children, and 1,000 for family. That will leave a broad range that employees can contribute themselves. There is an IRS maximum for each year of the plan. The overall account balance is unlimited, or there is no limit to how much you can save in total, but there is a maximum each year that you can save. And those are listed on the screen. Again, it rolls over every year, so you never lose your contributions. Your funds do earn interest, and it grows tax-free. Once you've met a minimum balance, you'll have some investment options. So there is potential for long-term tax-free savings. If you don't have a need to use a whole lot of the money that you put into the Health Savings Account is another vehicle for tax-deferred savings. The funds are available to a beneficiary in the event of the employee's death at some point during the, a plan year. So it's not, again, not a use-it-or-lose-it. Funds are never taxed when they are used for eligible expenses, for medical, for doctor visits, for hospital stays, prescriptions. You can use them for vision, for glasses, contacts, things like that, and also for dental, fillings, for braces. Our insurance is somewhat limited in terms of the coverage we have for braces. This is a great opportunity for families who have kids who need braces to cover more of it. Upon retirement, you can use the, and again, the Health Savings Plan, it's yours forever. It's portable, you can take it with you, whether you're a Hampton City Schools employee or not. And when you retire, you can continue to use those funds for medical expenses. And that would include COBRA insurance. You can use it to pay for Medicare premiums and for supplement plans, and also for long-term care premiums, if that's something the employee chooses to do. Once you reach age 65 or you're older, you are able to pay the deferred tax on them and withdraw the funds with no tax penalty for any reason. So if I'm 66 and decide I want to go on a cruise and I'm going to use my HSA to fund it, I can do that. So that's also a nice benefit. This slide shows the proposed rates for the 2014-15 school year. Again, these are draft, but we do anticipate that these will be the final numbers. And what we're showing is the current PPO rates, or actually, they're not the current rates. These are the proposed rates, and it shows the increase over the 13-14 premiums for both the PPO and the HMO. Obviously, since the HDHP is new, there's nothing to reference from this school year. You'll notice that for employee-only on the HDHP, it will be zero cost to the employees. So we're very excited about that. We think that'll be a great tool to help in recruiting folks, and also potentially, you know, retaining folks as well. And again, the premium rates are much lower than they are for either the HMO or the PPO. Also, we anticipate that the PPO will be eliminated with the 15-16 school year. We anticipate that this is the last year that we will actually have the PPO available for our employees. The network of doctors for the HDHP is the same network that is available for our current PPO. And we do anticipate savings, actually, this number that's on here is, I think, slightly different from the number that's on the board report that's on Board Docs. It should be in the vicinity of $300,000 in terms of the savings that we anticipate for this plan. We will be putting online on the benefits page of the Hampton City Schools website a link to this presentation. It can also be found on Board Docs, but first, not everyone knows how to get to Board Docs, so it will be available on the benefits page. And there will also be a couple of short videos that do a very good job of explaining exactly what an HDHP is. In addition, beginning in April, we will be visiting schools and having information sessions on the High Deductible Health Plans, and representatives from Anthem will be there to help answer specific questions that we may not be familiar with. But do you all have any questions that either Susie or I can try and answer for you today?
Mr. Kilgore?
I had one. When you were talking about the HSAs and you were talking about Hampton City Schools making a one-time contribution, that's once a year, or is it just once?
Once per plan year is...
Okay. All right. Just wanted to clarify that.
Yes. Sorry about that. That's once per plan year.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Mrs. Smith?
I just had a comment that I think it's really a wonderful option to provide the employees, because, and depending on the situation, it can really save a lot of money upfront on their premiums while also helping us control costs. So I think it's wonderful that you're presenting this, and thank you very much.
You're welcome. Mrs. Smith?
I just wanted to make a comment, because through my husband's work, we have a High Deductible Health Plan, and we have the Health Savings Account. And there are a lot of things you can use that on, like vitamins, shampoo, soap, all sorts of things, other than just prescriptions and doctor's visits. People don't realize it.
Correct. Any other questions from board members? All right. Thank you so much. Thank you. Dr. Shiflett?
Thank you. Our next report will be outlining various portions of our upcoming FY15 budget, specifically Fund 51 Food Nutrition, Fund 60 reimbursable projects, Fund 65 Rental Income, and Fund 94 Student Activities, also known as our Athletic Fund. Mrs. Scott?
All right. Good evening. Yes, we are very excited to present to you our other budgets. As you know, this is a little bit of a swap from what we normally do, but I've got some very expert ladies here to present. So I've got Dr. Julia Bryant, who is going to talk about our food and nutrition budget. I've got Ms. Visel Townsend, who's going to talk about our reimbursable projects or our grants budget and the rental lease budget. And then I've got Ms. Beth Mayer, who's going to talk about our student athletics budget. So we're going to start with Dr. Bryant.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Section 205 of the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010 requires that local school food service authorities participating in a national school lunch program raise lunch prices each year. And these lunch prices are not to exceed 10 cents. Our average pay, here in Hampton, our average paid lunch does not meet the federal lunch reimbursement rate. The Superintendent's Memo concerning, containing a calculation tool has not been released as I present this budget. Once released, the lunch price increase will be determined. I have three budget scenarios for you this evening. The first budget scenario does not include a price increase. And one thing that I must say is that our revenues for the budget, FY15 budget, the recommendation, will increase by 1.56%, but our expenditures are decreasing by 3.61%. And the major reason for that is that we, my fund balance was a little high, so I had to start to decrease my fund balance. And I'm decreasing that through capital outlay by replacing as much as the outdated equipment in the schools as possible. Now, one thing I must say about this budget is that we are absorbing the monitors as school food service employees, and that's why you see my increase in salaries. And this is a budget without an increase in lunch prices, but of course, I have to meet whatever the federal regulations say. My next one is a five cents increase in the lunch prices, and these are the lunch prices for the paid students only. You will see I will gain $35,817 additional dollars here. You will see I will gain $35,817 additional dollars here, giving me 1.9% as an increase here. But my expenditures will not change. And that brings my fund balance to $3.7 million. The next one would be if I have to increase the price by 10 cents, and that would give us additional revenue of $71,634. And my expenditures would be the same, and my fund balance would increase by 3.7%. My goal is to keep my fund balance at $3.6 million, because that's within the guidelines of the requirements of three months operating expenses. Because we actually have three months where we're not bringing in money, but we're paying money out. So we have to keep that input as call of fund balance. Are there any questions?
Questions from board members? When will you know whether you need to do a 5-cent or a 10-cent increase?
Well, the superintendent memo has not come out. I contacted the Department of Education, and they don't have, and they don't really have a concrete answer for me. They are saying sometime in March.
Okay, okay, so we'll know a definite on which version of this you'll go with when you have that information.
Right.
Any other questions from board members? Alright, thank you, Dr. Bryant. I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, if there is a raise and you have more money available, that will, again, be going to update equipment and things that make the cafeterias more attractive to students.
That's correct.
So that, I know if you visit school cafeterias, they're all looking much more attractive, and they're certainly more attractive places to work if you're a food service worker with up-to-date equipment and so forth. Makes their job a lot easier.
Right.
Thank you.
Anything further? Okay, thank you, Dr. Bryant.
Thank you.
Alright, next I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Visel Townsend to talk about our reimbursable projects and our leasing funds.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you can see that in our reimbursable projects, we're going to have approximately a 6.3% overall increase in our budget for this year. It's comprised primarily of the four areas, state funds, federal funds, tuition, and other funds. And our largest increase this year will be in our federal funds. We've had a slight decrease in state. Tuition has remained level funded for this year, and other funds increased a little over $3 million. This is the detail of each of the funds. And when you look at the state funds, we've had a couple of funds that have ended this year, but we've had two new grants that have been added for Career Technology, the Information, Design, and Engineering Academy, and Architecture and Applied Arts Academy. In our federal funds, we've had good news recently that our Title I program will receive an additional $800,000 next year, which is kind of reversing our trend of losing money in our grants over the past few years due to sequestration. And we also have a new grant, Youth Career Connect, for $1.2 million. It has not been awarded as of yet, but it's highly likely that it will be awarded to our school district, and we should receive word on that in April of this year. We also had two grants that ended, the Parent Resource Centers Grant, that funded a kind of a half a position for that center. It is carried in our operating budget and will continue to be carried there. And the Garrett Program will end after six years in funding to our students. As I stated earlier, our tuition program is staying level funded, no increase or decrease there. And our other funds had a 3.1% increase, primarily due to our CPAG television program. And within this reimbursable grant fund, our program, we're allowed to carry a fund balance. And then CPAG has a fund balance remaining at the end of the year that will help increase their budget next year. Any questions?
Yeah, I got...
Mr. Harper?
Just a clarification. Under appropriations?
Yes, sir.
There's something called teacher mentor and hard to staff schools. What is that? What's a hard to staff school?
It's a grant that helps with schools that, basically what it says, that it's hard to staff. If you have teacher mentors or teachers within the school that are helping with various things, they give a little extra money to the school system to help the teachers to help either increase quality of education or help increase their experience in teaching, kind of like professional development. And so that if there are positions in the schools that are hard to staff, they will help, like, train the teacher kind of thing to help other teachers pick up the slack in the school to move forward with any programs within the school.
Okay. And right down from that, something called special ed jail?
We have students that do, that within the youth program will have to have jail time in the jail, and so...
Real jail?
Yes, sir. And so within the special ed area, there are teachers that go into the schools to help teach those students that are incarcerated.
Thank you.
Mrs. Smith?
I was just curious with that one grant, is it, you're waiting to hear word back from, the Youth Career Connect?
Yes.
What is that? It's sort of self-explanatory.
It's Youth Career Connect with Career Technology from the Department of Labor to assist with the technology program within the schools with the students to help them to be trained in, if they don't decide not to go to college, to be trained in a particular area so that they can help increase the economy within the area.
Oh, great, okay.
Other questions from board members? Okay. Thank you so much.
One more.
Oh, one, oh, you're this one too, excuse me.
This is a new one. This is the first time we've presented the rental or leasing income for Mallory and Mary Peak. It started a few years ago when the schools were closed. Mallory is leased out to the Office of Human Affairs, and there's a rental agreement with them that provides roughly $35,000 in income per year. And Mary Peak, which is rented out to the downtown Hampton Child Care Council, Inc., and they have a lease agreement for $94,812. And going forward, the Mary Peak contract will stay level. The Mallory contract will have a 3% increase in funding for next year. Our budget is, because of the miscellaneous revenue, which is, it changes from year to year, and it's been very slight this year, and investments, which investments have dropped considerably over the past few years, there's been a decline of $3,400 or 2.5-6% for next year.
Questions from board members? Mrs. Smith?
Is, what about Mary Mac, doesn't that get rented out, or?
No, no, it doesn't at this time.
Not run out?
Currently, right now, Tom Sawyer and some of his staff are occupying a portion of Mary Mac because of the tornado damage done to the maintenance facility.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I got a call from Head Start today, and they're expecting, hopefully, a new grant and more of our space, so that number should go up.
Any other questions on Fund 65? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Alright, and Beth Mayer will talk about our student activities.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you look at my budget for next year, we have had, we have an increase of $41,500 for several reasons that has gone up. The main reason is the VHSL reclassification has increased the transportation. Not only do we travel farther, but we're traveling more. More people are qualifying for postseason, things like that. We also increased, I also increased the officials line item. The football officials rate went up, so actually, it occurred this year. We didn't see that coming, and so I just put it in the budget. We did not increase activity fees for our children. They will remain at $20 per sport. I did take away the fee sponsorship. The line item just wasn't needed, it wasn't tapped into. Our children are either coming up with the activity fee, or the coaches are doing fundraisers to cover that cost. And the last is my capital replacement needs. I do have, I have on the docket, we're going to purchase Kikatan High School wrestling mat. It's very expensive, and theirs is pretty worn down. So we decided to go ahead and do that. And that's what, like I said, most of it is the transportation. And that's because of the reclassification. Right now, I want to take, I would like to take the money from fund balance because I'm not quite sure where we're at with that. We could go further up, more than what I'm thinking. So I would really like just to kind of take it out of fund balance and see where we're at next year. Do you have any questions?
Questions from board members, Mr. Pearson?
Ms. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
When there were initial discussions about the new conference alignment, and I know you attend the meetings.
Yes, sir.
Is there any indication that some argument was made in opposition to the new alignment in terms of expected increase in funds? And with our state budgets for the last four or five years, it's almost preposterous to think that we're going to enter into a plan that's going to cost school systems more money. Did anybody ever bring that topic up, that there would be indeed an increase in funding?
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, our region, the eastern region, really, we really tried hard for the VHSL to reconsider because of the cost that it was, we were, we were thinking that we were going to have to put up. But the VHSL, when they took the vote, most northern and central regions, or all of them, when we took the vote, they were all in favor because they're already putting money out on transportation, they said. And that they would like to share the wealth. So that would mean that we would also be putting out money for transportation. But yes, and there is talk that they would like to go back to the old way, but it's mainly eastern regions speaking. All the other parts of the state's very happy with the reclassification.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions for Ms. Mayor? I have one question. I noticed you have it broken out by school and by sport. And I noticed that you have track, but you don't have cross-country. Is there, is that all coupled together?
This has been going for a long time, for years, that the amount is a little bit higher. It's like $1,200 compared to, say, like, field hockey is $1,100. And the reason it was higher was, the thinking was that the girls' track and boys' track not only takes the indoor track, but outdoor track in cross-country. So cross-country does pull from that, that line item.
And when you think of three sports under that price tag, it's a bargain theoretically.
Yes.
Okay, and that number seems to be satisfactory?
You know, it is. The cross-country has very little cost. We don't see them going away to invite, or invitationals. The uniform is pretty inexpensive, and it can be used for a long time. Now, the indoor and outdoor track, those are where you're going to get into them going into the invitationals. It's $300, $400 a pop, and that's where that money will be taken.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members? On our Fund 94. I think you're in the clear, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you.
Dr. Shiflett?
Thank you. As Ms. Scott mentioned when she came up, this is kind of a departure from the way that we usually present our budget. But we did this hoping that we would have a little better information at this point with which to present our operating budget, Fund 50. And as you know, on March 8th, we are expecting some information, but the all indications are that we may be waiting a little later for the General Assembly's work. Our next report is our monthly business operations financial update. Mrs. Scott?
Okay, I'm trying to figure out how to close out of this.
Okay. Sorry.
Alright, switch gears here.
The close button on the Mac is on the opposite side of your Windows machine.
Okay. I really need to learn how to use a Mac, clearly. We accountants are kind of stuck on Windows machines. I'm here tonight to present to you the results of our operations as of January 31st, 2014. As of that point in time, we had collected $101,003,038 in revenue, and our expenditures and encumbrances were $100,943,313, both of which represent just over half of our budgeted revenue and expenses for this point in the year. As you know, because we mention it every month, our budget is built on a projected ADM of 20,150 students. However, when we submitted the fall membership report, our projection, or our final count for fall membership was 20,347. And when we run that through our projection model and trends from prior years, we determined that our projected ADM for March was going to be 20,113, which is approximately 37 students less than we budgeted. However, in the grand scheme of things, and even with revisions in the Governor's Caboose Bill that was presented in December, we're only expecting to come up about $153,000 short in revenue based on this difference in the ADM, and we expect to be able to cover that through attrition, so we do not foresee a problem with it. Any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Scott. Mrs. Henry?
I have one weird question. As we have done a better job with dropout recovery, has that affected that projection model at all for the March ADM?
You know, at this point, we are still seeing a decline. Part of that is due to what's going on in the city in terms of redevelopment. But the decline is not as steep as it has been in the past.
You know, we, your model that says, this is our September, this is all the kids we've signed up in September. They've registered. And we know historically, that's going to be less in March because they winnow away into the woodwork or whatever. Has, have all of our efforts with dropout recovery helped that at all, or do we see that at all?
You know, I don't know that I can answer that specific part of the question. We do look at the retention rate when we're looking at fall membership to March ADM. We're looking at the retention rate of several prior years. We look for a trend. And it's actually been bouncing around a little bit, but it is gradually improving. So, you know, if I were just theorizing, I'd say possibly that's it.
Hopefully, we won't really lose the 37.
I was going to say...
We haven't changed the model.
Yeah, I would have to talk to Dr. Cooper to see if, you know, if that's really having an impact. But we do look at trends. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from board members? Alright, thank you, Mrs. Scott.
Thank you.
At this time, we move to the portion of our meeting where we have a hearing of any delegations or a presentation of any communications or petitions. The public is reminded that speakers are to limit their comments to a maximum of five minutes in accordance with School Board Policy BDDH. And Madam Clerk, would you please present the protocol?
Citizens are invited to address the School Board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the School Board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the School Board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the School Board with decorum on policy issues and refrain from personal attacks. Speakers shall not address matters involving individual employees or students as these topics may violate confidentiality and are not appropriate in a public forum. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the School Board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Our first speaker tonight is Mr. David Dietrich.
Good evening, Mrs. Mugler, members of the school board, Dr. Schifflit. My name is David Dietrich, 139 Wilderness Road. Tonight, I'd like to talk about the school system mission, which is, in collaboration with our community, Hampton City Schools ensures academic excellence for every child, every day, whatever it takes. What does collaboration with our community mean to this school board? Well, I've been told that, well, it appears to me that the members have consistently stated that they do not have to respond to the concerns of Hampton residents. You contend that we are a representative democracy, so you're only accountable at election time. This statement reflects the hubris of the school board members we have today. You always make it clear that you're put out by being asked serious questions. As a result, you rarely do respond. As for collaboration with our community, the budget process is the only formal consideration given to this community. And then there's no real involvement in the decisions being made. Instead, the choice is between what you want and nothing, a Hobson's Choice. What does academic excellence mean to this school board? Hampton City Schools 2015 Strategic Plan states that the student learning target is 100% of all students who have attended Hampton City Schools for one full academic year will meet or exceed grade-appropriate standards. This statement is not very meaningful in a couple of ways. First, 100% of all students will never meet standards unless you're, unless they're very low. And second, standards of learning really only seem to be about getting more money from the state and federal government, and not really related to student performance. And nothing is more important than the success of our children after they leave the Hampton City Schools. This can be easily determined in at least a couple of ways. First, there's employer demand. How many students are employed during school and after graduation? You don't measure this. And second, there's college remediation rate. How many graduates must retake high school classes because they did not do well enough to meet college standards? You don't measure this either. Finally, what does every child, every day, whatever it takes mean to this school board? Hampton City School mission statement was developed to focus stakeholder expectations on the most essential outcome the district hopes to achieve. The school board supports HCS leadership, faculty, and staff in their work. This is all very nice, but it doesn't really stand up to scrutiny. Even your response shows that the children are not the primary focus. I recommend that you redirect your energy to make our schools the best in this entire region, if not the state. The entire school system should be there to graduate students that are prepared to go out into the world and succeed, if not excel. How can you possibly say you're doing this when you have no idea what happens to our children after they leave? I'll leave that with you. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. Our next speaker is Natasha Hubbard. Is Natasha Hubbard here? Okay. And then our final speaker signed up tonight is Lynn Lesko. Lynn Lesko, are you in the room? That concludes our speakers for tonight. We'll move on to other items for action. First on our agenda for action tonight is textbook adoption, AP Human Geography, Biology, Grade III, and Grade VIII Science. And there was a presentation at last board meeting with regard to these books. And at this time, I believe we have some science folks in the room. Are there any questions from board members regarding the textbook adoption?
I did want to just clarify one thing that was discussed at the work session, but it wasn't televised, because I have had a couple people approach me after asking why we're buying textbooks for eighth-grade students when we're possibly going to the iPads for them. And I don't know if someone can speak to that, but I think basically because there is an online component to those was the reason why. Is that a correct statement, Dr. Schifflit? Oh.
My name's Greg Freeman. Yes, you're correct. There's an online component with, with the textbooks.
Okay, great. I just sort of wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Is there a motion with respect to the textbook adoption?
Madam Chair, I move approval of Item 7.01.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Pearson that we adopt textbooks for AP Human Geography, Biology, Grade III, and Grade VIII Science. Is there any discussion? Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote?
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on our action agenda tonight is Item 7.02, and Item 7.03, which are certification of the school board meeting of February 19th, 2014, and the certification of closed session of February 19, 2014. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of Action Items 7.02 and 7.03.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mrs. Phillips that we approve minutes of the school board meeting of February 19, 2014, and the certification of the closed session of February 19, 2014. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote?
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Abstain. Moving on, we have Items 7.04 through 7.010, which pertain to policy revisions. Is there a motion with respect to these policies as a block?
Madam Chairman, all these policies involve personnel issues, human resources, and they've all been discussed in our work session. I, I request that we treat them as a block and approve them as presented, Items 7.04 through 7.10.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Henry and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we approve revisions to policy, school board policy GCBDA, sick leave, revision of school board policy GCD, paid personal leave, the revision of school board policy GCPB, resignation of staff members, revision of school board policy GCPC, employee retirement, the deletion of school board policy GBOA, Virginia Retirement System, and the revision of school board policy GCDJ, leave donation and transfer policy. And finally, new school board policy GCDK, sick leave bank. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote?
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to deliberation, we start with Item 8.01, the proposal of the 2014-15 school calendar and planning calendar for 2015-2016. We had an earlier presentation from Mrs. Johnson and Mrs. Riedel. Are there any additional questions from board members or discussion with respect to the calendar at this time? If not, we'll move on to Item 8.02, which is Crown Castle Tower at Mallory Elementary School site, co-location agreement with Verizon Wireless. And I believe we have a speaker on that tonight. And also, our attorney may be interjecting some information for us as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Mugler. This is Larry Bickings from Verizon, and he is here to give you some particulars with regard to the co-locate agreement that the school administration is asking that the board agree to with Verizon on a co-locate at Mallory Elementary School. I have put in front of each one of you his memo about the particulars and photos.
Good evening. How are you doing?
Good evening.
As, as Reeve said, we've worked the agreement out between the attorneys here, and I think we're good with that. The proposal would be to co-locate antennas on the existing. It's a pole there that's used as a light standard on the ball field, as well as a communications tower. So we put antennas at the 76-foot level of that, which is just below the last ones that was theirs, Intello's. We'll be below them. It's the same type of antenna, and it will look just about the same way. It's going to be three antennas flush mounted to that tower. There's an existing compound. It's a 40-by-60 compound. We'll be using about a 20-by, 30, 20, it's a 40-by-60, so we'll be using about a 20-by-40 part of, one-fourth of that. And we'll put our equipment cabinets in there. And the cabinets are pretty generic. Some of them are different size, but they're about equal to what's there. We'll have a compound. We'll close the fence in, and it'll be a ball net to keep the balls and stuff from going into the compound. And that's pretty simple application there, because it's already a tower there, and it's already a compound there.
Questions from board members for Mr. Bickings? Mr. Harper?
With, with the ball field there, and the concern for the kids that play there, are you somehow concerned about the security of that particular area? See, there's a net that keeps the balls out. But what keeps the kids out?
There's a fence going to be all the way around it, and it's locked gates.
Okay.
The, the fence is already around just about.
I'm familiar with it. I'm familiar with it.
Okay.
And we, I mean, there hasn't been, I don't think there's been any problems, but if there's a concern for keeping balls out, then obviously there must be additional concern to keep kids out.
Well, I mean, the fence should keep it made. It's locked.
It should.
You know, it's an eight-foot fence, I believe it is, around there. And it's, it's locked.
Any, any additional questions from board members? I have one just real quick question, and that's with regard, I'm looking at the, there's a photograph here that shows the Intello's cabinets that are existing, and then the lease area. Will you be adding additional fencing, or will it go inside the existing?
No. What, what's fenced off there and there, it's like four sections. Sprint is in the first section, Intello's is in the second section, and we'll be in front of them, and we'll finish, finish, or complete that fencing of that area. So, and locked.
Okay. Okay. Any additional questions from, from other board members? All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Bickings, for giving us a little bit more clarity on the.
If you have any more questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
All right. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Reeves, anything additional to, to add?
I think that's it. If you look at the, the last page diagram that Mr. Bickings gave you, and you look at the compound where he's noted in yellow where Verizon is actually going to be, along, along the fence line is what he's talking about is going to, they're going to add additional fencing to completely close that in. Does that help?
One whole bit as well.
Yes.
Instead of an L now. Okay.
Yeah, that, that makes it a little more clear, that particular diagram.
And, and if I'm correct, correct me if I'm incorrect, I believe that each one of these compounds is almost going to have their, their own, own fencing, but then the whole, the whole thing is fenced from the outside as well. Do you see what I mean?
Oh, additionally?
So each one of the, each one of, there's going to be internal fencing left there. Is that correct or no?
Right. And then it's just like split, four, four, Intello's, and then the power box is always coming down, the easement, easement to get the power and filter. But all the cabinets and equipment will be kept there.
Okay. Okay. Thank you so much. Anything additional from board members on this co-location agreement? And we'll be taking this matter up at our next public meeting on our action agenda. We move on to several policies that we have for deliberation tonight. We begin with Item 8.03, which is the review of school board policy, AGA, recognition for accomplishment. We had presentation of this policy at our previous meeting, our work session on February 19th. Are there any questions or any additional deliberation from board members on, on recognition for accomplishment policy? Okay. We'll move on then to Item 8.04, which is the revision of school board policy, IGBA, programs for students with disabilities. This, this item's up for revision. We presented information at our earlier meeting. Any, any questions or additional deliberation on this policy? There being none, we'll move to Item 8.05, which is the revision of school board policy, IGAD, career and technical education.
There was a suggested new bullet. I am handing out hard copies so you can see what the suggestions, suggested new bullet is. Comes on your second page. It's in green.
Ms. Mugler, members of the board, feedback or a question that I received from Mrs. Smith regarding this policy. If you would go to the first page in the red line, first paragraph, line seven, go to the end of that line, "The sentence reading occupational career and technical program shall be aligned with industry and professional standard certifications if applicable." Mrs. Smith indicated that she felt that that statement was important to this policy, and we still operate under that premise. So I extracted that particular sentence and made it a standalone bullet. So I wanted you to see where it came from and how I addressed Mrs. Smith's question.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Are there any questions from board members or any additional deliberation? I think that's probably a good addition to, to what's existing in the, in the remaining language. If there's no further questions for Dr. Johnson on this policy, okay.
And there's, there's an extra "and" in there I will take out.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll take that up on action next time. Moving on to Item 8.06, revision of school board policy, IGBI, English as a Second Language. Are there any questions or additional deliberation? Mr. Kilgore?
I had a, a comment, I think, from Ms. Reeves, and it's partly because of reviewing the career and technical education policy. But in looking at the code attached with that policy and looking then at the English as a Second Language policy, it appeared that potentially we need to add a legal reference to 22.1253131. If you, that particular code, paragraph 12, talks specifically about identification and assessment of ESL students. So I just wanted to put it out, if, if you could look at that and see if that legal reference needs to be added to this.
Okay.
And specifically, paragraph 12. Specifically, paragraph 12 from that code.
253, colon, 13?
Yes, colon, 13.1.
I will do that.
Anything additional on English as a Second Language policy? Mrs. Smith?
Yeah, I had also talked to Dr. Johnson about that very last paragraph of the policy. It talks about students may be accepted and provided English Second Language programs if they entered Virginia after reaching their 12th birthday, not reached age 22. So I was a little confused with that, because it doesn't talk about under 12. And I know we provide ESL for under 12, and the policy doesn't really talk about that. So I wasn't sure if maybe a clarification in the beginning of that, just saying in addition to...
I do know that particular paragraph is verbatim from 22.1-5.
And I did share that with Mrs. Smith, and I did further research.
Thank you.
And we have a couple of options. The policy, as you see it here, is VSBA, verbatim. But I went into the federal statute, and in the No Child Left Behind Act, Title IX, Section 9101, Paragraph 25, Limited English Proficient, the term "limited English proficient" when used with respect to an individual means an individual who is aged 3 through 21. So this is the federal statute and the federal definition of a limited English proficient student. The paragraph that is in question came directly from the Code of Virginia. It is listed as a citation. One recommendation, rather than to rewrite the entire policy to make it more inclusive, would be to remove that particular paragraph, since it is cited as a legal reference, and add the reference to the No Child Left Behind Act, the section that I just read to you, that identifies a limited English proficient student aged 3 to 21. And so add a legal citation that specifies the age range, because the legal citations you have here specify other responsibilities we have for English as a Second Language programs, to include what goes in our plan to the state, our method of communicating with parents. But the citations, as they're currently listed in the policy, don't reference age. So that was how I researched it, by age. And if we add that citation and delete that paragraph, the citations would cover all of the parameters that we have to operate under.
I think that's a wonderful suggestion. Thank you.
Here's the, here's the federal, so this is what it would be referring to.
So the, the plan is then to delete the last paragraph in the policy and to add the legal reference to the federal code?
To the federal code, yes. That would be my recommendation, after looking at Mrs. Smith's questions and looking at other ways of writing the policy, so that it's clear that we serve children of all ages, but their federal guidelines do spell out who we're supposed to serve. We are in compliance with that. I do not have any background information on why the state code is written that way.
Okay.
And it really will only read 20 U.S. Code, Section 6311, 6825, 7012, and 9101. And the 9101 is the definite, it's all, well, it's, yeah, it includes all the definitions.
Okay. Any objection to Dr. Johnson's recommendation? Then we will go with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Item 8.07 is the Review of School Board Policy, IB, Academic Freedom. Are there any questions or additional deliberation on this particular policy? There being none, we'll move on to 8.08, Revision of School Board Policy, IHA, which is Grouping for Instruction. Any questions or deliberation, Mr. Kilgore?
And another comment, I guess, from Ms. Reeves. And maybe I'm not looking at the latest version of the VSBA policy, but the version that I did look at also cited 22.1-78. So I don't know if, why we don't, but it seems to be more applicable than actual 22.1-70, so.
I can certainly add it. Neither 70 nor 78 usually, they are such catchalls.
Right, right. I just, I noted that VSBA had included both citations.
I'm happy to add it if it's your pleasure.
Any objection to that addition? Very good. We'll add that. Item 8.09 is the Review of School Board Policy, IE, Organization of Instruction. Any questions or deliberation, comments from board members on this policy? And the final item on deliberation tonight is 8.10, Revision of School Board Policy, CBB, Appointment and Term of Superintendent. Any questions or comments or deliberation on this particular policy? Okay. If not, we'll move on to deliberation first read, and we'll begin with item 9.01, and that is Policy JO with respect to Student Records.
We have very recently changed this, Student Records, and in addition to adding a cross-reference, I also went through the policy itself. And since we cited 42 United States Code 14071 within the Student Records policy, it's been our practice to pull it out and actually make it another citation. So that's the only change.
Any questions for clarification on Policy JO? Okay, we'll move on then to item 9.02, which is the Revision of School Board Policy, JB, Equal Educational Opportunities.
And this is to add cross-references, a cross-reference to the Section 504 Non-Discrimination Policy, which you adopted at your last meeting.
Any questions from board members for clarification on this Equal Education Opportunities policy? Okay. There being none, we'll move on to item 9.03, which is Policy IFB, Pilot Projects. Dr. Johnson, will you be speaking to this policy? Hello.
Our pilot project policy is designed to serve as a mechanism for communicating between central office and our schools. As an organization, we are guided by the Code of Virginia and establish our instructional program to be consistent with requirements in the code. There are times when schools have needs or identify needs, and they would like to make modifications to the instructional program, and this is a mechanism for them to bring forward. Their idea is that we do support innovation, but we need to know when schools are making changes. And this is a way of capturing what they're doing, why they're doing it, what the impact on resources may be, what need they're trying to address, and then we are all on the same page.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Johnson on this policy? Okay, we'll move on to item 9.04, the Revision of School Board Policy, IHB, which is Class Size and Teacher Assignments. Dr. Johnson?
Again, this was a review just based on watching the timeline for the policy. One minor grammatical edit was made. We do staff consistent with the standards of quality, and we do have the latitude to make adjustments within those guidelines, and this policy certifies that.
Any questions for Dr. Johnson for clarification on this policy revision? Okay, we'll move on to item 9.05, which is Policy BF, Board Policy Manual. And Ms. Reeves, you'll be addressing this policy?
Yes, Madam Chair. This was a new policy that you all adopted in December. But since then, there has been some dialogue with respect to not having policies that required simply aligning cross-references and some correction of grammatical punctuation or spelling errors, going through the entire six-week process. And so there is language added to that SBA recommended language that would delegate that to the superintendent or designate to go ahead and do those things. When it's done, I handed out to you all last week a little, for lack of a better word, a chart. And then what I would do periodically, when there were enough on the chart, I would, you know, keep a, I would monitor when the cross-references were added and that sort of thing, and then hand you all out the chart, so you'd know when that was done. And a good example of this is going to come up with the ones that Ms. Ruth is going to bring forward after this one on GBAC and GBACC. Well, just changing these two policies, because GBAC has a policy title change, requires no less than 14 other policies to have cross-references needing to be changed and aligned. But there's no need to update the date on any of them. It's just that we need to align the cross-reference. So you'll just get that, you would just get that in a chart, so that you don't have to go through every one of them.
Any questions for clarification on this particular revision?
Madam Chair, I was just thinking, what, a chart, you're just going to give a list? These policies all had a cross-reference change period. That's all we need, because after all, we trusted Carolyn to put 100% of these policies onto board docs and to get everything right and proofread it. So it's just a question of going in and adding a few letters to the policy to change the, to alter the cross-references. That's minuscule compared to what we've already entrusted her to do with regard to the policy manual.
Any other questions, comments for clarification on this policy? And it'll come up for deliberation at our next meeting.
I think perhaps the most important thing to understand about this addition is that it's not going to have any change in our five-year review obligations. When we add a cross-reference, that doesn't give us a buy on a new date, because the date doesn't change. It'll still be reviewed for content every five years. This just makes it possible for us to move them along and make sure they're aligned, so that they're user-friendly. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Indexing function, really.
Mm-hmm. We'll move on to item 9.06, which is the Revision of School Board Policy, GBAC, Standards of Conduct. And Ms. Ruth?
Good evening. The changes to employee, or Standards of Conduct, GBAC, are actually tied to the next policy that we'll be reviewing, which is GBACC. The changes in GBAC are relatively minor. We've added a definition for staff member, which matches the definition of staff member in the next policy that we'll be reviewing. And so the associated change in language from employee to staff member, we have broadened the scope of the group that is covered by these policies, rather than just Hampton City Schools employees. For purposes of this policy and the next policy, employees, or any individual working for or on behalf of Hampton City Schools, including school board members, full-time, part-time, and substitute employees, student teachers, tutors, and volunteers are covered by these policies in terms of the conduct that we expect for anyone who is working with our children. Other, like I said, mostly it's just, it changes the wording of employee to staff member throughout the policy. We have added, we have added a bullet under standards, I think is very important in our definition of our expectations for Hampton City Schools employees, and that is that all staff members will avoid even the appearance of impropriety with students' parents, school community members, or other staff members. And so that's probably, to me, the most significant addition that we've made to this policy. And then again, just some cleanup with language.
Any questions for Ms. Ruth on clarification on this policy? Okay, we'll move on to item 9.07, which is New School Board Policy, GBACC.
Yes. This one is Maintaining Professional Staff/Student Boundaries. Feel this is a very critical process, or policy to add at this particular time. It, again, has the same definition of staff member that GBAC has, and it also defines what the educational purpose is. There are, we talk about the appearance of impropriety, and there are times, for instance, during a PE class, it is appropriate for a physical education teacher to be in the locker room when students are changing out of their school clothes into their gym uniforms and vice versa. It's appropriate for an adult to be in the locker room with children in various states of undress. It is not appropriate for me, as a human resources employee, to walk into the locker room while students are in various states of undress. There is no educational purpose for me to be there. So that's why we've included that definition. There are times when a situation, you know, might seem a little inappropriate, but if there's an educational purpose for it, then it's covered by this policy. It lists some things that are absolute prohibitions in terms of behavior between employees and students. And this policy strictly addresses the adult-student relationship. It does not get into, you know, employee and employee relationships. We're strictly talking about how adults behave around students. So in terms of things that are absolutely never acceptable under any circumstance, things such as touching, caressing, fondling, or kissing students in a sexual or sexually intimate manner, making sexual flirtatious or romantic advances, exposing a student to pornography, contacting a student via social media for any harassing, discriminatory, or illicit purpose, and associating with students in a setting where students are provided, are consuming, or are encouraged to use or consume any sort of illegal drugs, alcohol, et cetera. It also includes some definitions of circumstances that could be viewed as inappropriate if they are not within an educational setting. It's a long list. It talks about electronic communication and is aligned with our current policies around electronics. Ms. Reeves mentioned earlier that we've got, it's 14 or 16 policies between GBAC and GBACC that are cross-referenced to all of these in terms of our expectations for employees' behavior around students. Talks about consequences. It also gets into detail about what will happen in terms of reporting if an employee does choose to violate any of the sections of this policy.
Any questions for Ms. Ruth for clarification on GBACC? And just to make a note, this is a new policy, not a revision. This particular policy is completely new.
This is a completely new policy. Yes, ma'am.
If there are no questions, then we'll move on to item 9.08, which is New School Board Policy, GB- is New School Board Policy GBA-CCA, the prohibition of bullying staff members.
Yes. Both the, if it is all right with the board, I will talk about the next two policies somewhat together because they are related. One deals with bullying on the staff member side, and the other deals with bullying on the student side. So there are some natural connections. Is that all right?
That's fine.
Okay. If you remember, at the first meeting in February, Katie Barbosa presented an update on PBIS and mentioned that all school systems in Virginia are required to have bullying policies or bullying prevention, anti-bullying policies by July 1st, 2014. The policies that are on first-read agenda tonight are Hampton's versions of those policies. We have a committee. Right now, it's strictly made up of members from SAC. It includes representatives from Student Services, School Social Work, Psychology, Counseling. Ms. Barbosa is the head of it. We've got Joan Davis, from an organizational development perspective, that have worked on putting these two particular policies together. I'll start with prohibition of bullying staff members. Again, we use the same definition for staff member that we have used in the two previous policies that I've discussed. We provide a definition for bullying. That definition comes from materials that were provided by the Department, Virginia Department of Education. And we also identify the term cyber abuse to be a little bit broader than just cyber bullying, any sort of abuse through an electronic means, is what we're taking a look at with cyber abuse. It's not just about cyber bullying. Excuse me. You know, the policy goes through our expectations. It outlines reporting procedures, and this is for adult, primarily for adult-on-adult bullying, but it also talks about expectation should a staff member notice or be notified of bullying that's occurring between students. So it's a little bit of both in this particular policy. With the student policy, prohibition of bullying students, JGB, we have the same definitions of staff member bullying and cyber abuse, and for the most part, the policy detail is the same. And you will notice under the reporting, well, actually, it's not under the reporting procedures, it's within the policy detail, some of the language was left in there about staff members. And the reason, it was intentional that we left that in there, we kind of viewed JGB as a policy that parents would reference and students would reference, and we in particular want parents to know what they should be expecting from their students, teachers, and administrators. We wanted them to know that if, you know, teacher Jones sees something happening, what teacher Jones is expected to do. And so we intentionally had left some of that language in there that mirrors the adult policy. And again, it outlines the reporting procedures. Their reporting procedures are somewhat different from the adult reporting procedures. Questions?
Any questions from board members for clarification on either of these two policies, GBA-CCA with regard to bullying in staff members or JGB, which is with respect to students and bullying? Any questions? There being none, then you are free to go, and we will move on to informational items, as that was the last item on our deliberation first read tonight. Moving on to informational items, meetings will be held on each Wednesday of the month of March here at Jones Magnet Middle School, and the superintendent will present her proposed 2014-15 school operating budget next week on March 12th, and public hearings will follow on March 19th, 26th, and April 2nd. The board is scheduled to vote on the budget on April 2nd, and then we'll present that to our council shortly after that. Dr. Shiflett, any informational items?
Just a couple of things. Tomorrow, I'll be meeting with my fellow superintendents from the Virginia Peninsula on a panel, talking to the chamber's leadership class. So it's always something we do every year, and I really enjoy doing it because it gives us an opportunity to meet so many leaders in the community and to talk to them about our respective school divisions. We've extended our retirement incentive deadline to Friday because of the inclement weather, and then on March 11th, I'll be speaking to the Military Affairs Committee, and I'm really looking forward to that, so that I can also talk to them about the great things that are happening in Hampton City Schools and join my friend, Ms. Ann Bain, who's an HCS representative on this committee.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Any informational items from board members? Mr. Kelp Gore?
I'll do a quick one. Wanted to thank Dr. Shiflett and Susie Scott and Mary Bunting for doing three budget public hearings, and to thank the folks from Jones, Bethel, and Hampton High School who hosted the events, so that the public could come in and hear a great level of detail of what's going on in the budget this year, both at the city level and at the school level. So, thank you.
And may I add something? Mrs. Bunting will be putting an online survey for citizens and others who were unable to attend any of the forums, and I believe it will go up this afternoon.
I believe it went up today. I got a text, it went up today.
So please take an opportunity to go through the presentation. There's an opportunity for you to do some polling on it, and I hope you take advantage of that.
Any other informational items from board members? Ms. Bolton, did you have anything tonight you wanted to share with us from the student perspective?
Um, not really.
Okay. Nothing new happening, huh? Just busy?
Well, yes. I attended a fundraiser for Mr. Will Moffett, in which I was able to receive all the money that I needed for my advance deposit for Hampton University, so at now, my education for my first semester of college is paid in full.
Wow, that's a great way to go into things. All right, any, yes, Mr. Harper?
Quick question about snow makeup days. Do we have any plans in place or any dates or, it's too early to say?
Well, we've, we're looking at some proposals right now, but we're not ready to announce yet. We want to really look at how do we best reclaim that time, so we anticipate having something by Friday.
Students are asking.
I know.
Okay.
I told my kids they'd be in school this Saturday.
Any additional items?
Please don't start that.
Of information.
I said mine. It's just mine.
If not, then this meeting is adjourned.